For emergency issues only, is there any school committee members additions to the agenda? I have one donation came in from Walmart and the donation request came in after we made the agenda, but the answer is due before our next meeting. So is it okay with, do we have to vote?
Uh huh.
I'm looking for a motion to add the Walmart donation to the agenda.
Motion to add Walmart donation to the agenda?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, that's gonna be on there. Can we call our groups to order? Yes, please. Would you like to call the select board to order?
Six oh one?
What is it?
Six oh one?
Six oh one, my watch is broken.
We'll call the finance committee to order at six oh one.
Perfect, thank you guys. So if the committee is okay, I'd like to postpone public comment because I think most of our comment is gonna be about our presentation and I'd like to postpone until after our presentation. You gonna be okay with that? Mika?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we, starting with special awards and presentations from the Belchertown Education Foundation. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
My pleasure. Hi, everyone in the room and who are attending remotely, my name is Jennifer Falter and I'm the board president of the Belchertown Education Foundation. I'm also grateful to be one of the founding members. So when I think back to when we founded the education foundation, it was a similar time, there were a lot of budget cuts and changes and machinations going on in the schools and a group of us got together because we wanted to preserve what was special about our schools and provide future opportunities for enrichment. And so we came together and we established this 501(c)(3) Belchertown Education Foundation. And we're an independent nonprofit organization. It's all volunteer, we have a community board of directors. We fundraise through individual community members and local and regional businesses and we provide grants solely to Belchertown schools. And what do we do with these grants? We fund innovative and creative projects that provide unique learning opportunities that enrich academic, artistic, and athletic pursuits. And we financially support projects that would otherwise go unfunded for our schools. So in these nine years or so of this foundation, we've awarded forty-five grants to our schools, totaling more than a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So these are dollars that are coming right from our community, our community members and our local businesses going directly to support our schools. Some things that might sound familiar to you, outdoor classrooms, calming and sensory spaces, flexible and alternative seating. We had age-appropriate drum harnesses a couple of years ago, scientific research and symposium. We kick-started the STEM lab in the high school and lots of social, emotional learning spaces. What we do is have an annual grant cycle, so we ask for applications and those are usually due around May first. We consider the grants using a process and then we announce the grants this time of year and get the giant check to the schools to help them implement the projects. We like to consider projects that serve large numbers of students and make an important difference for students aligned with enriching the curriculum. So we have a lot of great partnership with the schools, although we're an independent organization. And we really like to support grants that result in lasting benefits extending well beyond the grant cycle. So as I mentioned, we do lots of fundraising, annual campaigns with businesses, we have Giving Day for individuals in the spring, dine and donate events. You probably have heard about some of our events at many local restaurants. We do parking lot for the fair and we raise money that way and Stop and Shop reusable Bag Program, all sorts of things. And so, you know, with all of you here tonight as an audience, I want you to know that your support matters. And what you can do is participate in these fundraisers. You can follow us on our social media sites, Facebook and LinkedIn. If you just give a like, you make a comment, you're helping boost it so that many others in our community can see it as well. So if you could do that, that would be excellent. If you're a teacher or a member of the school system, you can apply for grants, so you can think about what might be something for the future. You could also reach out and talk to teachers and others about ideas you might have for the schools. And then helping recruit board members, we are growing our board. We want to continue to be able to bring new and exciting things and even look at doing things differently to build capacity for even more for our schools. So if you could help us recruit board members, if you're interested, you could go to our website or you could email us at info@belchertowneducation.org. So this is our all-volunteer board right here and as I mentioned, we're growing. We'd love to consider more board members or if you're not interested in the board itself but would like to have a part in some of our events or our outreach, we are more than happy to invite you to do that as well. So I'm going to just close here with the most exciting part with sharing the grant awardees for this current school year. The first is an at-home reading enrichment book bags at Swift River Elementary School. And as we know that reading to a child during these early critical years produces many positive benefits. And so this grant funds book bags that will allow a hundred and forty first graders to take home a new book bag each week. And that way we have provided access to reading materials for every student in that grade. And so this is one of the grants for this year. Next, we've got the elementary makerspace STEM lab at Swift River. So this is quite unique to have a STEM lab in these early grades and there's some new research out there that shows the, demonstrates the benefits of having this hands-on approach to science so early in the curriculum. And so that will be launched. The dollars were just transferred, so that project is on its way. We've got new skeletal models improving science course study at the high school. So there was a twenty-year-old skeleton that was being used in the science curriculum and so the ask was to replace that with two new skeletons as well as some other models which would really help more students to be able to study those models during the lab and coursework that they have versus sharing one skeleton that's falling apart. And in conclusion, we've got new equipment that enhances cooking skills and student independence at the high school. And so this provides new appliances and prep services. It helps advance the cooking curriculum for students of different abilities for their transition into adulthood. And this is the transitions program that cooks three to five times a week and it really helps support life skills and independence. So they are getting two hygienic stainless steel tables for food prep, a refrigerator and electric cooktop. So they said that they're gonna do, what is it, chopped? They're gonna have chopped at the conclusion of the school year to demonstrate their skills. So this gives you just an example of this year's grants and how we support the schools. So again, this year, more than twelve thousand dollars in grants have been awarded and we want to wish everyone a great year and ask for your ongoing support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there any questions from the committee?
No questions. Just wanna say thank you to you and the board for all that you guys do.
Our pleasure. It's amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say Jen, thank you. We could not do all of this without you. Year after year, you provide us with grants. The teachers are very ecstatic when the grant applications come out and I just wanna say thank you. And anything we can do to support you, please let us know.
Well, thanks for being a great partner. And you know I come knocking, I know where to find you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have our consent items. I start with asking if there's anything anyone wants to remove. I wanna remove item B, that donation we already approved and that was my bad that it was left on there. Is there anything else anybody wants to remove? Okay, I'm looking for a motion on the consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, passes unanimous plate and the Walmart donation. Thank you guys for agreeing to add it. So once you've had a chance to read it, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Walmart donation.
Am I missing it? Does it say how much? It just says school supplies.
Yeah.
Okay.
Know the dollar amount?
I do know.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, I was just, I was missing it somewhere. Motion to accept the Walmart donation?
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. With that, is the committee okay if we move the cold spring presentation up to right now? All right, Brian, it's all you.
Oh, here, you take copies. Okay, thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it. This presentation will go live as soon as I'm done speaking about it. So we will make sure you have access to it on our Facebook page, in the drive for school committee and anywhere else we think is helpful and I can send it out to the other boards once we review it. Have to make sure you pay attention. So a little bit of how we got here. So no big surprise, we had talked about possibly closing Cold Spring last year. Inflation has made everything more expensive for both the towns and the schools. We have seen a increase in high-need students across the district. We had a show of community sport and passing the tax override, so thank you for that. And then we had an unexpected increase to insurance that would cost us the six hundred and fifty-six. That number's a little lower after last night's conversation. I thought we had a very positive meeting last night with the three boards. We each came up with solutions to help deal with the health insurance, but part of that plays into this discussion. Also, we hear a lot about the declining enrollment. That is true. I just wanna say that, you know, we tried to address this between 2012 and 2025. As the overall enrollment declined eighteen point nine percent, well, so didn't our homeroom teachers. So when I first started in Belchertown a number of years ago, we used to have eight or nine sections of each grade, so grade one, two, three, four, five, six. We are down to seven sections at each grade now. In 2025, we reduced general ed teachers at Javish Brook. We reduced a ELA teacher, a math teacher, a science teacher, a social studies teacher. But we can't keep reducing our teachers because at a point, as I've been saying year after year, it's going to affect our academic performance and it will continue to do so. So we all are trying to keep up with inflation, the town's doing it on their side, we're trying to do it on our side. So we looked at our overall district enrollment and we did this in-house and the data administrator, Ben Adamson, has done this year after year and his data analysis has come out when we also had the MSBA study done for Javish. So you can see over time that we are continuing to decline for the next ten years, we believe we are gonna decline in our enrollment. The blue represents, I don't know if you can really see it, but it's the top three lines, the historical data. Pink is the projections and yellow are some assumptions that we have to make. So if you look at this table, jump into 2026, 27. So as I said earlier, currently there's seven homerooms per grade. If we reduced it by one in each grade, so there'd be six homerooms, those are the class sizes you would see. So for example, let's take second grade. With seven homerooms, there's about eighteen point nine students in a class. If we get rid of that and we go down to six, there would be twenty-two. As you can see, fifth grade is kind of a high class for us and sixth grade is a high class for us. I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. At Javish Brook and the high school, we look at math classes or ELA classes because those are the ones that are required. So we believe that the estimated would be about, you know, twenty-one kids in a classroom, nineteen to twenty-one if we continue this trend. Then what we did is we looked at each of the schools. So this is Cold Springs, thirty thousand square feet. Just some history, I'm not gonna read everything for you, you can certainly read. It's one of our oldest buildings, built in nineteen fifty-four. Went, underwent a roof replacement in two thousand and twelve. The boilers estimated to be twenty to twenty-five years old, will likely need to be replaced in the next five years. The majority of the building's major components remain the same. We did the average annual maintenance and operations. Utilities is about seventy-six thousand, maintenance and repairs is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, for a total of two hundred and fifty-three thousand. Correct. Correct. So lawyer was saying there's no ADA compliance, there's no elevator there, we can't have students that are in wheelchairs down to the basement floor, we gotta make sure they remain on the top floor as there's no elevator. There is a ramp that goes outside to the playground, but yes. Swift River Elementary, eighty thousand square feet, constructed in nineteen ninety-six. It has the original roofing. Within five to seven years, we'll probably need to replace that roof. The boilers were replaced in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, but once again, the major building components remain the original. Average annual maintenance and operations, utilities, maintenance and repairs, and then you get the total of three seventy-six, four eighty. Chestnut Hill, constructed in nineteen eighty-six, it's gone, has had some significant upgrade. The roof was replaced in two thousand and eight, the boilers were replaced in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and thirteen. The cooling tower was replaced in two thousand and nineteen. We got new flooring, has been installed. Several classroom heat pumps have been replaced. LED lighting upgrade was completed in two thousand and twenty-four. Despite all these improvements, there's other major building components remain original. As you can see, we have the average annual maintenance and operations, utilities, maintenance and repairs, which gives us a total of about five hundred and sixty-four thousand. Javish Brook. Constructed in nineteen sixty-four, the building has undergone several updates over the year. The roof was replaced in nineteen ninety-four and nineteen ninety-seven, it was replaced in two sections, now it needs a full replacement. Boilers were replaced in two thousand and eleven and classroom unit ventilators were updated in two thousand and three, two thousand and three. We had an LEP lighting project that was scheduled for twenty twenty-five. Most of the, many of the floors have been replaced, however, we still have major building components there as well. Utilities, about a hundred and fifty-four thousand, maintenance and repairs, two sixty-one, which gives us the four fifteen for Javish Brook Middle School, at seventy thousand square feet. Belchertown High School, constructed in two thousand and one, the building retains its original roof. Boilers were replaced in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and fourteen. LE lighting was updated into twenty twenty-four. Once again, same story, all other major building components remain original. Average annual maintenance and operation, three hundred and seventy-three for utilities and four seventy-three for maintenance and repairs, which gives us the grand total of eight forty-seven. You need to wait, Miss Lori.
I'm calculating it right now, Lori. I think it's later on in the presentation.
Can always predict what she's gonna say. Belchertown Public School Central Office, we looked at that too, six thousand square feet, constructed in nineteen thirty-nine. The building has, the roof was replaced in two thousand and nineteen, the windows originally installed in nineteen seventy, they're due for replacement. The boiler replaced in two thousand and seventeen, one bathroom has been renovated. Average annual maintenance and operations, fourteen thousand, maintenance and repair, twenty-three seventy, which thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven thousand for central office. So I was asked to kinda come up with how would we do it if we closed Cold Springs and reorganize the district? So I did it by seasons. So in the summer, we reviewed enrollment trends, building conditions and spacing data. We shared some initial findings and rationale for closure considerations. I'm looking for the school committee to vote to close Cold Springs if they choose to. If that's the case, we'll have to contact and work directly with the Department of Ed, there's a process that you have to go through at the Department of Ed. And then we would develop communication plan for families, staff and the community. In the fall, hold staff listening sessions, host parent guardian listening sessions, provide updates at school committee meetings. The winter, we would continue with the follow-up listening sessions. We wanna make sure that we are hearing what parents, teachers and the community has to say. I'm sure there's some things out there that we haven't thought of. We will draft the school reorganization plan, what about the assignments, transportation, staffing, resources. We'll present that plan to school committee and stakeholders and then we will finalize the plan. In the spring, we would have to communicate decisions to staff, families and the community. We would have to begin the transition planning and then we would have to provide supports, school tours, question and answering, transition activities. By June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, we would have to have a celebration of the seventy-two years of Cold Springs. We would transition students and staff to the new schools and then we would complete the final building closure activities, records, equipment, facilities. So this is what it would look like just as a visual. Right now, we have, as you know, Cold Springs on the left, if you're looking at it, pre-K, Swift River, Chestnut Hill, Javish Brook Middle School, Belchertown High. It would then become, if we close Cold Springs, Swift River Elementary would be pre-K to two, Chestnut Hill would be three to five, Javish Brook would be six to eight and then Belchertown High School would be nine to twelve. There is some talk about possibly regionalization down the road, whatever. This would still leave the high school available if down the road, a couple of years, people decided, let's look into regionalizing our nine to twelve high school. A lot of districts do their high schools. Let me just give you a summary of all this, we'll give you some more details. So I talked to you about Cold Springs and the utilities and maintenance costs. So if you remember, utilities was the seventy-six thousand, maintenance and repairs was a hundred and seventy-seven, we got the total of two fifty-three. To Lori's question, we did do the per pupil expenditure, this one is just on Cold Spring right now because we're talking about Cold Spring. So whether you look at it as per square foot or per pupil expenditure, Cold Springs is the most. Okay? And I can certainly send everybody this information for the other schools as well, but we did, Lori, look at that. Yeah, yeah, no, that's okay. So we talked about utilities and maintenance. There would also be reduction of staffing at Cold Springs. If we didn't, if we closed Cold Springs, we wouldn't need a nurse, we wouldn't need some custodians, we wouldn't need office personnel, we wouldn't need an administrator and there's a possibility that we would have to reduce one of the classroom teachers. So those are the five positions we're talking about when we're estimating this. This three fifteen is an estimate, it could go either way. So if you took the five teaching position, the five, not teaching, sorry, not teaching everybody, five staff positions and you added that to the maintenance cost, your total savings per se would be five sixty-eight, eight fifty. But that's only an estimate because if we move sixth grade to Javish, their water costs are gonna go up. So this five sixty-eight is an estimate because if we're gonna put a hundred more students into Javish Brook, then we're gonna be using more water, for example. So you have to keep that in mind. I'm sorry? Four seventy-five, says Lori. So when we talked about this and we talked about Cold Springs, we wanna maximize savings. There would be fewer transitions for students in the district, which also would save fewer transition meetings from school to school. It's a better coordination and vertical alignment with grade spans at four schools. I personally like the fact that, I love Cold Springs, but if we had to make this decision, I like the fact that our early learners will be in the building for more than a year or two. Yes. ADA compliance, super important. But you just don't get acclimated to school and then you leave. So you can become that community pre-K to two, just another plus in these hard decisions. Middle School usually covers right now six to eight. Sixth grade is kinda combined with seventh and eighth now in our curriculums and our resources, so that would be great, they would be in one building, they would have the alignment, they would be able to work with seventh and eighth grade teachers. Listen, we got the message, no new school. We understand that, I understand that, I said that in the beginning. I don't live in town, so I respect what the decision was, but we gotta do something. And if we take the savings from Cold Springs School, we could use that money to help fund our existing schools. Because I want everybody to keep in mind that it's not just moving grades to other schools and then we're done. Swift River, we need a new roof in five to seven years. We need boiler within the next five years. Chestnut Hill, our HVAC system's past end of life. We talked about the maintenance of the pool, we talk about that all the time. Do we keep the pool open, do we not keep it open? There's additional costs. We have a great relationship with the Park and Recs, we work together on that, but that comes up every budget cycle. Javish Brook, we need a new roof, plain and simple. We need a new roof at Javish Brook. We are looking into the repair process at the MSBA to see if they can help us. Heating and cooling systems, windows, and we need to talk about parking and the traffic flow at Javish. You know, we have another lot, I don't know if we have to make another entrance or whatever, but these are things we have to talk about to make sure that we're just not moving these students and having parents line up on Springfield Street for three miles to drop off. It's gonna be very chaotic. The high school, rooftop handlers, we're gonna need those replacements. So just keep in mind that if we close Cold Springs, we still have these capital improvement plans that we need to do to our existing schools. And I'm sure the town has the same issues, you know, we're all in this together, but just gonna say that. So to ensure long-term improvements and maintain a safe, functional and modern facility, the district in collaboration with the town will need- the district in collaboration with the town will need to actively pursue additional financial initiatives, grants, bonds, capital improvements, and any other thing we can think about that we can work together. That would support, you know, Swift River, Chestnut Hill, Javish, and Cold Springs. Swift River.
I should say BHS.
Chestnut Hill, Javish, I said it twice.
No, it should say BHS.
Yeah, that's where we asked, BHS. You heard me say this a thousand times, and I'm gonna say it again. We're in this financial, I don't know what we want to call it, with insurance and stuff like that. As with everybody in the town, we've had to make cuts. If we continue to cut beyond this, it's going to be classroom teachers, and it's gonna be resources, and it's gonna be extracurricular opportunities. And I don't say that to scare people, I'm not one that says, I'm gonna, you know, put sports on the chopping block so all these parents show up. This is the reality, that we've been cutting, cutting, cutting. I think I mentioned in my presentation last year, I think, you know, FY twenty-one to FY twenty-five, we've cut thirty point five positions, we added six, so we're down twenty-four point five positions. That doesn't mean that we didn't need to make those because of our enrollment, but we have to look at that. Again, you don't see the high school on here, but I want to reassure you that the high school is in this too, because we're gonna have to look at class sizes at the high school. We're down students at the high school, and we might have to reallocate some of those positions, resources, to other places in the district. If we go down back to, you know, twenty-two kids in the first grade, are we gonna have the conversation that that's maybe too high, we need to bring in instructional paras to help them with that class size? Those are all things we need to talk about and do it, but I just want to be clear that just because you don't see the high school up here does not mean that the high school is untouchable. I think I'm done.
All right, so for the committee, I've been thinking about this and processing it, and if it's okay with the committee, I would like to do public comment now, because we don't answer their questions, so if they have questions that we then want to talk about, we can. And I'm worried about all this, but only one person signed up, so. So, public comment, I have Rachel DeShannon. Rachel Lo is gonna set the microphone up there if you could speak there. Don't rush, it's okay.
I actually have some questions that I'm reading for another parent who can't be here tonight. With the known safety concerns at Javish identified a few years ago, is adding more children to that building a structural or safety concern, given the increased wear and tear? She also has concerns about shifting sixth graders to the junior high. Developmentally, they may be at risk, being grouped with significantly older students, both in the classroom and during less supervised times, such as on the bus, at lunch, and at recess. Exposure to inappropriate discussions or behaviors is a very real possibility. Additionally, with more students coming to the main campus at SRE and Chestnut Hill, I anticipate the bus and car lines becoming more congested. The younger grades in particular, pre-K and kindergarten, slow the process since parents often need to get out of the car to buckle children into car seats. Is there a plan to add a dedicated bus lane or to restructure traffic flow with a one-way loop? Right now, the new car line at SRE blocks the side parking lot, has cars entering from multiple directions, and gives buses no safe lane to pass. It feels very chaotic and potentially dangerous. And finally, with more traffic coming in and out of State Street, has there been any discussion with the town about adding a stoplight to improve traffic flow and allow cars and buses to enter and exit the campus more safely?
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to have public comment? Yes, please, Mel. That's okay.
My dear school committee members, you are on a tightrope balancing the needs of a budget against the impact to our students. You've done enrollment studies, you've compared the pros and cons of closing Cold Spring versus Javish versus Central Office, considered if regionalization would be better in the long run. And while I personally do think that closing Cold Spring is the smart choice between all of these other options, I have grave concerns about shifting the grades to put more students in Javish Brook, the next oldest school building. There have been many issues with Javish, the roof being a major problem. A few years ago, the school committee put together a proposal to build a new middle school as a way to address the building's age and deficits. Unfortunately, the town did not vote to approve the funding for a new building. We were told that the problems with Javish could be fixed, and here we are, a year and a half later, and I have seen nothing happen to address those problems. And now we're proposing to fit more students into that school. I would have greater confidence in the school committee's proposed grade shifts if we had concrete plans to solve, or at least start solving, some of the issues with Javish Brook. I would feel better about this plan if the select board and the finance committee, some of the members of which oppose the new building, would commit to repairs, putting money towards replacing the roof, or even start with small fixes like fresh paint or flooring to create a more welcoming and functional environment for our students. This town has an unfortunate habit of neglecting its buildings. If we do not make a robust plan for repairing the school buildings, one that does not include paying for maintenance by cutting teachers or services, we will be facing these same problems again in the very near future. Mel Donovan, Belchertown resident and parent.
Thank you very much, Mel. Please come up. If you could please state your name.
Hi, Anna Bartolini, I'm the mom of a second grader. I don't have a prepared comment, just as they're off the cuff. So, I agree that Cold Spring, I think, needs to be closed. I also think that Javish needs to be closed, and I know that that is obviously, was, we tried and it didn't go as planned. But I do echo the sentiment that it's hard to make sense of moving an additional grade level to a school that is so, you know, in such poor condition, and then to think that we're gonna funnel more money into, like, sort of stopgap measures to keep that school alive for a few years or... So, I'm hoping that within the context of this conversation, we can think creatively about how to close Javish, or to do some kind of renovation that the town would get behind and support. And I don't know if that brings into the conversation, thinking about seven and eight at the high school in a separate wing, or, you know, I'm not sure what that means, but I do think that it is concerning to think that we're gonna keep pumping money into Javish and put a whole nother group of kids. That also makes me wonder if we could see the numbers for how many students SRE could hold, and same thing with Chestnut Hill, is there, I don't know the numbers, is there a way to retain sixth grade out of the middle school, at least temporarily? I'm not sure if that's a possibility. I don't have a problem with sixth grade being together, I think that's a fine grade span, but I do think, you know, I don't want us to continue just to spend money on a building that's going downhill.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? I will turn to online, if anybody online would like to speak publicly, if you could please turn on your camera and/or unmute yourself. Okay, I'm hearing none, with that, I'm gonna close the public comment period. And I'm gonna open it up to the committee for questions, thoughts, concerns, we can start at the end of the table and go this way.
Is there gonna be any increase in costs with the move of the kids from Cold Spring to Swift River? I know that there'll be an increase in cost for Javish Brook, but do you have an estimate for...
So, yeah, we estimated that we were gonna need about twenty, thirty thousand for moving costs, and then we would need about twenty thousand for paying educators to reset up their rooms and packing up their rooms.
Will there be any increase in operational costs?
No, there shouldn't be.
Okay.
I think it was a good question about Javish and the safety concerns there with adding more students, so have we looked into, you know, does that entail that we need to upgrade anything or expand, you know, stair, I know stairwells are narrow and tough to get down and things like that, so have we thought about any added costs with adding additional students to that building?
So, I struggled with this a little bit. There are no safety reasons why children shouldn't be in that building. And I just want to go on record saying that, because I have spoken to the fire chief and the building planner. We have students there now, yes, absolutely, we need a new roof, but there is no immediate safety concern that students shouldn't be in that building. And I just want to throw that out, just so you know where I stand. Do I think that we may need to make improvements to Javish? Yes. Do I think we need to invest in Javish? Yes. The, from my perspective, I worked with the committee that proposed a new middle school. For whatever reasons, it didn't pass. So, you know, we have to look at what we have. We looked at, where we talked about seven and eight in the high school, there was a lot of feelings about our high school wasn't set up for that. We didn't want seventh graders walking around with twelfth graders, because there's no separate wings or anything of that nature. So, when you asked me about safety at Javish Brook, nothing comes to mind that has to be done, but I say that knowing that we would probably have to work with the town and apply for the accelerated repair. We would have to maybe bond some projects out. Yeah, fresh paint, we could certainly clean that up. I know, you know, students, when we talked about some of the spirit assemblies, they just wanted nice bathrooms, we painted them up, we gave them mirrors, and you thought we won the lottery. So, I want to get some feedback for students as well, but I, when I, like hallways, I don't see, you know, that being an issue. I do think that in our conversations, there are a lot of middle schools six to eight. Six would be, and probably seventh and eighth, we're kind of working this out. Sixth grade will probably be in its own wing, you know, and more than likely, for the first year, they will continue their teaming and go between, you know, grades, the specials will be, so they're not interacting, you know, all sixth, seventh, and eighth like that. So, I don't know if I'm answering your question.
So, I wasn't implying that it is unsafe for students to be there, sorry if that...
No, 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 I've heard safety a lot since we've talked about this.
So, we've had an inspection for the current number of students, I guess I'm asking, have we thought about with an increased number of students, has anybody looked into, would that cause potential issues with the capacity of the school or anything like that in terms of safety?
There would be no issue, and I looked to Eric, but... And Amy, I want you to know that I was gonna say that spiel about safety anyway, just because, you know, we throw that out, and I totally understand, but I think there's variations of that. I certainly would not want to put anybody, sixth grader or twelfth grader, in any situation that a building is unsafe, but I just wanted to make sure.
And I assume that if sixth grade's there, they're gonna start at the same time as seventh grade?
They would.
My daughter will be in sixth grade next year, so, cool, we'll get up an hour earlier. Okay, thanks.
And they'll be home, they'll be able to come home, clean the house for you, and when you walk in the door, you'll be all set.
All right, that's on record, I'm gonna show her.
My question's about special ed students.
Yeah.
What's the impact going to be on the availability for classrooms for special ed students or class sizes?
Yep, no, that's all, we're moving a class up for, so Javish, if you're talking about Javish, everyone, yeah, Javish...
As you're moving these grades, I'm assuming that certain classrooms may no longer be available, were those rooms that were being used by special ed classrooms, what will happen to them?
They will have rooms, just like they do currently in their buildings.
Will it impact class sizes?
I don't know, I don't really see how it would, because you're moving third grade to Chestnut, you're gonna bring a special ed teacher with them, so you're still providing those services. Sixth grade's going to Javish, you're still going with those services, so I don't see it. We'll tell you that it will benefit our self-contained special education classes, because at Cold Springs, we don't have a social-emotional behavior program. We don't have a pathways program. We don't have a language learning program. They will have all that, if identified they need the services, they would be able to go into those programs, K to two, three to five, six to eight, and nine through twelve. But I don't see any impact to special education.
I guess this is a broader question for the committees that are here. How do we continue the progress that we made yesterday and start solving these building problems without impacting class sizes? I'm just gonna throw a quick fact out there, Florida, who is not known for their robust education, in their constitution says how big their class sizes should be, eighteen for grades one through three, twenty-two for grades four through eight, twenty-five for grades nine through twelve. We are bumping and over what Florida recommends. So, if we get chipped away at as a school district, I'm worried that we're gonna be with class sizes that are bigger than functional. And so, I'm hopeful, I guess, after hearing kind of parental concerns about Javish, if we can figure out a way to hold on to the people that we have, because we're basically right-sized after this move. Our classes will be reduced and consolidated to the point where we're right around where we need to be for at least the next five years, assuming our enrollment works out the way it's supposed to, based on Ben's prediction. If that's the case, we need to make sure we prioritize that money to come from somewhere else other than the way that we operate. And how do we keep doing what we did yesterday in the most functional way, given these times that we're facing? I don't know if you can answer, or if you're also hoping for the same thing, but...
I have a question about your core staff, so you said, okay, the class sizes, but did it also account for the teaching staff, even though for those class sizes, because in a lot of our rooms, we have a teacher and then, if necessary, a para and what have you. So, Florida's saying, okay, you can have up to this many students, I disagree, but what's correlation to the teaching staff, is that with, or is that with teacher and para?
It's with one, one teacher, but...
Could you repeat the question?
Lori, can you talk? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, Jake was just saying that Florida, which is...
Excuse me, the mic is there.
I am so hard maintenance.
Yeah, why not? Why not? Keep it there.
But Florida, who I agree is not known for its robust focus on education by any means, was, Jake was quoting some class sizes that they had limits on students based on the grades. And so, my follow-up question to that was, was there any comparative on the teaching staff to those class sizes? Because I know in Belchertown, sometimes you'll have a class of twenty-two with the teacher and maybe a para, so, or a teacher, maybe two paras, depending on who the class is. If it's in Florida and they're saying you can have up to twenty-two kids per class, is that just with one teacher, or is that with...
With one teacher.
Right, so...
And we, can you, what grades do we do that in?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, we do have instructional paras only at K and preschool.
And so, you don't, do you have para paras, any helpers whatsoever? I don't know the answer, that's what I'm asking.
We do not, not grades one through six, and that's why I said, you know, if we do this, we might have to assess that. The only other para professionals that are in the classroom are if students on IEPs or 504s need additional adult supervision.
So, if you have a student who is on a 504 or an IEP in a mainstream classroom, there very well could be additional teaching staff, even if that class size was a little bit larger by a few students, you'd still have that additional help?
Right, no, I know what you're saying, but the first priority is the student on the ed plan, so it really comes down to need, you know, if I'm your para, Lori, and I need to bring you back ADHD all the time, and I may not...
Which I need one all the time.
Yeah, I may not be able to help hide the classroom teacher.
Other classroom, I'm saying you would be maintaining the student that you were in there for and helping them so that... Other classroom, I'm saying you would be maintaining the student that you were in there for and helping them so that would not take away from.
Correct.
And Florida has to operate under the same rules, so they're not going to be different than us in any way, that way.
And I know this is tough, and I know we say it all the time, but it's reality. It's not like when we were in school. There's a lot more social, emotional, mental health issues going on in classrooms today. And teachers have to balance that with, with also teaching and providing academics. So, you know, so when you get up there in numbers, it's tough, you know.
So I guess I'm hoping that, given our, I've gotten other parent concerns. Can we commit to repairing this building if this is our solution? We know that we're going to be using J-Bish Middle School for the next four to five years at least because of this enrollment data. Can we commit to making this building functional so that we're not sending kids to a place that parents are concerned about? Now, obviously, it's not going to be a fancy facility, but it may need a road so we don't have three miles of traffic, and it may need a new roof very soon. In a way that's not going to make us have to cut teachers and make class sizes way bigger than they need to be. So that's something I'm hoping we can talk about.
So I need you to speak into your ear.
Thank you. To that, to that point, I, I just have a couple of questions regarding, so like, what I say makes sense. With the, with the special ed, it seems to be going up every year. Has the state increased the needs for specialized or identified or redefined what that is? Or the just, the needs are just going up?
No, we're fighting that all the time with the state about needing more reimbursement for special education students. They, what we do at the end of the year, it's called Circuit Breaker. We are able to put some money, you know, students document their time with special needs services. We get reimbursed a certain percentage of that. Now we get transportation for that, too, so we're, we're doing that. So there is hope, but as of right now, no.
But I, I don't, I don't think that, that's not what I asked. Have they increased the definition of what a special needs student is to where Belcher Town has to provide services for a student that 10 years ago wouldn't have required those services?
Like defining?
Yeah, I know, I, I, to my knowledge, they have not changed the definition of that. It's been very clear. I'm going to ask Lisa, going back to my sped director days, and that has not changed. There's certain categories that are recognized by the state, and there is no new disabilities under that.
So, so with that said, with, with the closing of Cold Springs School, you're looking at a cost savings of just say a half million dollars. That's a seven to seven and a half million dollar bond in and of itself. Obviously, can't use all of that money for, for improvement. But I, I think if we prioritize, and I do know a little bit about this because I worked closely with Eric this past year on this, and it was really a collaborative effort. It went really well. And the, I, I really think the major issues can be addressed without, it'll be, it'll hurt, but it won't be too much of a headache. And we'll have to, you know, redefine after that what, what's needed to be done. But, um, but between the roof and, and a lot, a lot of the other issues that are, that are going on in that building, I, I do think it can be addressed without, especially with the override going through, without a whole heck of a, a lot of, a lot of trouble. It's just going to take discipline.
So to answer your questions, Jake, over the last two years, the Select Board, Finance Committee, School Committee have had a concerted effort to try to improve relations and improve the budget process. It would be a little premature tonight to say what that's going to look like in the future, but I don't see that the momentum that's been building is going to change. And the other point that I'd like to make is, right after the J-Bish Brook Middle School vote, the Select Board was very clear that the health, safety of our students was paramount and that they would support improvements and repairs to the J-Bish Brook Middle School. And I don't believe that's changed either. I can speak on behalf of the board for that. We want a welcoming environment in that building. And right now, we are in a holding pattern, waiting for a project to be brought forward. Eric and Brian have been working with MSBA, and I believe that we're going to see something soon, relatively soon. So when that happens, we'll start those discussions, and you certainly have my support. I think that building needs to be kept operational so that we can have a good learning environment going forward.
So I want to reiterate something that was said at the beginning of the meeting. And that is, this town has not taken care of any of its buildings for a long time. And now we're here, and, you know, this is exactly the kind of storm that can put us at loggerheads. But last night, I saw the three boards work incredibly effectively. Like, like, it was such a pleasure, you know? And I, I certainly walked away feeling like we can do that again. You know, the, the board really has made a concerted effort around, well, we developed the capital fund because we know that all the buildings need attention, or, well, 90% of them need attention. And the one thing I'd caution is that we don't get in, you know, locked horns around this because all the buildings in town are critically important. The town hall had a wall that I pushed against it and it went in. We have the general public going in there, kids, adults, and the wall, you could push it in. You know, that was a mind blower to me. The J-Bish roof was a mind blower to me. So you've had a partner with the Select Board, I can say, certainly in the past two years, and, and, and the year coming up. But recognize that all the buildings are, need, need help. And we hope that you will support our efforts in making the town safer overall, school and town.
Don't I always? When have I ever met a mic I didn't like? I do agree. I had my daughter went through J-Bish and, like, it inhibited her learning to some extent to be in a building like that, that was in the condition that was in. And how many years ago was that? Like 10?
Well, what, you're 70 now?
I'm 70, she's 25, so, but it did, I remember her and her friends, every day, it was depressing. It's just depressing. I 100% agree to that. I would go in there for something, I gotta get out. And I can't imagine having lived in there every day, trying to learn with the issues with the airflow and the heat and the air conditioning. I wanted a T-shirt that said, I survived J-Bish, but my kid would not let me get one, when'd you get out of there? And then to go up to the high school. So I agree. But I also agree with what Lisa said, a lot of other buildings. So it's going to be, in town also have been neglected for decades. So it's going to have to be a balancing act. Although I personally, if there's things that we can do to make it, like you said, like, it was like winning the lottery, just paint and mirrors and whatever, just making it feel lighter and brighter. If there's some smaller things we can do while we're working on the larger things to help the students that go there just feel more empowered by their environment and more inspired to learn. I don't know about the rest of my committee, I can't imagine, but like, I would support that. Because sometimes even those smaller costs don't take that much effort or time, but they make a big, big deal. So that's a great way to start looking at it, like, what can we do even on a small scale to make it more livable and inviting while we're waiting for the funds on the roof, while we're waiting for the funds on some of the larger items, which has to be balanced against which building's falling apart first? Because there's so many of them that are neglected. I don't know if that made sense, but it felt good to say.
The, the last question I was hoping we could address, thank you, appreciate that, is the question about, can SRE hold more kids? I know that we got that question from the crowd, and I know you have a solid answer about why these, this bumping of grades has to happen the way it does. But I think if we just clarified that, it might go a long way.
Yeah, you know, in order to move Cold Springs and Pre-K to Swift River, we have to, there's not enough space, so we have to move third, so we have to make that shift. And along the way, we may have to reduce class sizes to make sure that, you know, everybody has a room. For example, like, in fifth, let me just show you something real quick. So let's just say for argument's sake that this is next year, 2026. So we do the realignment, and we know that fifth grade has 27. Lori's fault. So let's just say our number in fifth grade stays up there. We do have the possibility to keep seven sections of fifth grade. But we can't do that for four and third and have enough room for everybody. So we could look at this, we could say, okay, you know what, instead of cutting the seventh classroom in fifth grade, we'll have seven classrooms there, but the others have to be six because we have some extra spacing. This year, too, and there's a difference between positions and people. We only posted for one-year positions for some of this, knowing that this may occur. But the sixth grade would go up to J-Bish, so that number would come down to about 22 because they have a schedule and different specials and stuff like that. So, you know, we might be able to do that and keep one of the larger sections, seven sections. But we can't do it in every grade. We can't do it K, one, two, three, four, five, five. We just don't have enough room. Because we still want to give due diligence to related service providers. They need rooms to pull out to do services. We need, you know, the art and music. We still want to maintain what we have there. So there's only so much spacing within the schools to do that. Does that answer your question, Jake?
There's really more from the crowd, so yeah, I think so.
Does that answer your question? Okay, yep, yep. And I, I want to reiterate, too, that one of my big takeaways from all this is, I'm going to have multiple listening sessions, and I need people to be honest. I need people to say, this is what we're worried about. I already heard about, we want the playscape from Cold Springs to be moved up to Swift River. You know, and I was like, yeah, yeah, we'll get there, you know, we'll put it on the list, but that's a priority, I understand. We will make sure, I jokingly said, maybe the PTO at Swift River and Cold Spring could devise a new one. You know, that didn't go over too well, but, you know, we're just kind of seeing. I get it, what I think may not be top of the list. I need people to remind me, this is what we need, this is what we need to do. And then if we make this happen, I want to give a shout out to Eric LeBeau right now because it's his people that are doing the grunt of this work, and we want to do it right. We know there's going to be some bumps in the road. But I just want everybody to be honest and let us know what you're thinking.
So, you know, I certainly understand, I echo the concerns about closing a school and moving more students into J-Bish when just not that long ago, we were looking to close J-Bish and rebuild. So as a member of the Building Committee, we heard repeatedly that if we did a certain level of repair to the building, we were going to trigger having to bring the building fully up to code. I mean, that was something we discussed significantly. So I guess what I would like to understand is what, if, if that is in fact true, and if it's not, well, I mean, I guess I would just like to understand that because, you know, on this list, we, we had talked about the new roof, that the building desperately needs a new roof. I know I'd heard after the fact that we could do it in sections to circumvent this, trigger. But I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if Eric knows the answer or anyone on the Select Board. But that is a major concern I have because it was something we talked about a lot as part of the Building Committee group. Thank you for remembering to come to the mic.
He loves a mic, too.
We don't know that 100% yet what the final costs will be once we start tearing that roof off. We will be applying this year for the Accelerated Repair Program for the roofs. I also, on the side, sit on a committee on the MSBA Designs, Designer Selection Committee as a member, and I've had conversations with the Executive Director and brought these kind of concerns to her attention. They're actively looking into adding additional funding for their accelerated repair programs for things like this because a lot of towns and communities are running into this where they're getting accepted for new windows or new roofs and then quickly finding out, well, because it's triggering these thresholds, now there's additional costs. And then the town has to go back to taxpayers and try to figure out a way to pay for them. So the MSBA is actively looking into trying to add additional funding to cover those types of expenses. We will probably have to get creative. We may have to look at doing the roof again in two sections like we did 30 years ago. You know, maybe not doing it all at once. But I don't, I can't give you a solid answer of what it will trigger just yet until we kind of go down that road with the MSBA and, and start looking at that a little further.
But I guess before we, I mean, because one of the things would be fire mitigation, right? And so like, is that if we were to do work that then triggered, bringing the building up to code, that then triggered additional work, like, it's not just cost, but it's also doing that work with students in the building. I just don't want us to get into a situation where we make this plan, put an additional grade there, start doing work to the building, and then find ourselves in a difficult spot.
Yeah.
That, that is my concern. You know, I guess we'll have to cross.
Yeah, and I served on that Building Committee along with you. And I was hopeful that we would, we would see a new middle school because, right, it takes all those issues and it solves them all with one swipe. You know, now we're faced with having to do those over a long term, and little by little, not ideal, but it still can be done. We can do some of these projects a little at a time with some help from the town and some grants. One thing I wanted to address that I think we, the town has done a great job, and Steve made sure, he pushed in his first year here, is we now have a capital improvement committee, which I also sit on. And we're finally seeing money, taxpayer money, putting, being put aside and towards these projects. I think on the school side alone, I think, Steve, correct me if, I don't know the exact numbers, but we got like $200 and something thousand this year from the, from capital improvement product, to put towards capital improvement projects, which is something we've never seen before. So we're definitely taking the steps in the right direction. I definitely have more confidence that we're starting to address some of the building needs that, that we have out there. It's going to take longer this way, for sure, but no, it can, it can be done.
Okay, great, thank you. So it's not really a question, but really, but more just drawing attention to some of the concerns raised about traffic, having an additional grade at J-Bish. I know, you know, should we move forward, we will address that. Lunch scheduling, kind of scheduling in general at J-Bish. So just want to kind of make sure we're all kind of keeping that in mind. And then my last question that's like completely unrelated, so you mentioned. So you mentioned that if we decide to close Cold Spring, that there's a process with the Department of Ed. Can you just talk about what that process is a little bit?
I don't know what it is, to be honest. No, I've never closed a building, so I don't know. It could be as simple as just signing off on something, but I don't know what the process is. Sorry. But I do want to remind people too, because I definitely sat on that MSBA building committee too. And when we apply for MSBA, there are certain requirements we have to have in order for that reimbursement. So although we may not like what the class sizes are, we weren't going to get reimbursed unless we went by those class sizes. So even with the, the roof, um, you know, I don't know what they're going to say or what you do, but they have a story. But if we want to be part of that program, we got to follow those guidelines as well.
So I, I just want to add something to what Eric said. When the school building committee and the consultant put that, that together, chapter four of the code was not incorporated into that. Chapter four is repairs. You replace windows, that doesn't count towards. It, it does not penalize you 100%. There are some things that do count towards it, but not everything that you repair would, would count towards a total aggregate to kick in, the ADA upgrades and, and everything. Some stuff would, but you, you do have to be careful about it, but not everything.
So I had a question. You talked a little bit about six through eight matching curriculums. And I had talked to some, I don't know, teachers or somebody, and they talked about Pre-K through two being an early childhood curriculum. And can you kind of comment about how that's going to benefit our district?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, early literacy is K to two. You know, and currently, we are working with our resources, which are K to two. We're working at ECRI, which is a K to two program. And that's all about routines and building vocabulary and building skills within students. So we move K teachers to Swift River. Then they're able to meet with their colleagues in grade one and two. And they're able to have a consistency of services, K to two, what are you working on first? What did we kind of forget, maybe? What do we need to work on more in K to get them ready for one? What happens when they go to two? So that all becomes a, kind of like that community I was talking about, where you're not just in K, and then you leave again. You're building that, that community. So there's initiatives by the DESI that you have to do certain assessments in early literacy that would work out in our benefit as well. Trying to see what else.
And then the six through eight?
The six through eight, yeah. Right now, we use the same resources through sixth grade that they use at Javish. So they're kind of by themselves when we do PD. They're on a different time schedule than the seventh and eighth. This was, again, bring them together, consistency, high expectations. They're able to talk about that and build upon, upon student success and what they need to focus on as well.
Perfect, thank you. And then car line. I wanted to mention car line. I really appreciate that somebody commented about the Swift River car line because that wasn't a place I'd yet been thinking. I was thinking you'd added some preschool. It's not necessarily a ton, but car seats. And certainly, they have to deal with it already in first grade, but that was really important. But I'm a member of many Facebook communities for different forums, and I've never seen anybody have anything good to say about a car line, ever, in the world, in any town. So I think dealing with both the Javish car line and the Swift River car line is going to be something we need to think about, and how are we going to handle that in both places, because both places have their problems. So I appreciated hearing that.
Could I just say one more thing?
Yes.
I think too, if we do make this move, I would advocate for, there's two houses at Swift River, A-side and C-side, that A-side or C-side, one of the sides be Pre-K, K, and then the other side be one, two. And that way, you can deal with the transportation on either end of the building that would hopefully, you know, kind of take, alleviate that traffic. That would allow, once again, in Cold Springs, because it's a circular, there's two separate houses. You've got K, you've got grades one, two, and three over here. You have grades one, two, and three over here. These first grade teachers don't see these first graders, da, 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 da. It just brings you back, and this is your team. We're all grade one teachers, let's talk about it, grade two. So we did think about traffic. You know, I have some thoughts about the Javish traffic, but I got to talk to that guy right there. So those are things we got to work out, and I think once we, whatever you decide, I think, you know, I'll be providing updates based on the parent, staff, community feedback, and then we can dissect those challenges one by one.
Yeah, I want to say one more. The traffic light on State Street, I get irrationally angry before 8:00 AM. And at 7:45, I spent forever trying to take a left out of there today. And I don't know if the town has any way to put a traffic light there, but I would love that from the people who are in charge of that.
Sorry, Ryan, last question.
Yes.
This slide has, is, when I, I said it's going to right-size us for the next five years, and I wanted to point out, there are teachers who will not be renewed on one-year contracts, as I understand it, baked into that?
Correct.
Can you just, I just want to make sure we say kind of publicly, I know we said at the last meeting about foreign language potentially.
Oh, yes, thank you for bringing that up. I did want to mention that, and thank you, Jake, for that. With this proposal, we would be eliminating foreign language at the middle school. And that's for a couple of reasons. One, we need the space, and two, we have had a heck of a time finding foreign language teachers for middle school. For the last two years, we've had either substitutes or, um, substitutes, teaching our foreign language, and it's just, it's, I don't know what it is. I talked to other superintendents, and it varies. Some people have it as a special, or they may have it in eighth grade. Some people don't have it at all. There's some pros and cons to it, but I just want to be honest, as of right now, we moved the French teacher from Javish up to the high school this year. We left Spanish at the high school, at the Javish Brook. And once again, we have a substitute in that position.
And it's how many teachers, how many across these grades are non-renewed, like, one-year contracts roughly?
Three or four.
While we're talking about those impacts, can you comment on the band program at Chestnut?
Yeah, so, you know, we talked about this, and I think this is feedback we need if we're going to do this. I think we got to dissect this. There was conversations when we had a close Cold Springs last year, were we going to have band in fifth grade here at Chestnut Hill? We were going to say, okay, you know what, we're going to start it in sixth grade. But those are things we got to talk about, like, do we want to keep band in fifth grade here? I will tell you that I am not, I am not against band. I want that to be very clear. But having to be a principal in this building, it's very hard to schedule academics when kids are missing band, and I know band is, is education as well, too. We had the conversation, okay, let's start it in sixth grade. They'll have it as a class, and they'll continue to do that. So I think things of that nature, there's some talk about what we can do when we present that thing, but we got rid of general music at Javish already because that was just a filler for kids that didn't want to take other things. We do have band and chorus there. We would continue to keep that there. But the, the two programmatic, when we talked about this last year, was the foreign language at Javish and band in fifth grade here at Chestnut Hill.
Is there any other questions or comments from the school committee?
I have a question about the foreign language program. Have you considered sharing, sharing the staff, the high school staff?
We have. We don't think it can work. Just to be honest, staffing-wise.
Anything else from the school committee?
Anything else from the other committees in session? All right, so with that, I am looking for a motion to officially close Cold Springs School and turn it back to the town effective June 30th? Yeah.
So, motion to close Cold Springs as a student who went to Cold Springs many, many, many years ago. But I think that this is something that we need to do, so I make the motion.
Nika's made the motion. Is there a second? Any discussion?
I think the committee definitely should be invited to that party, that 72nd party. That would be really fun.
Lamika's going to be the guest speaker because she went there a long, 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 long time ago, so.
You could be the speaker if someone came up for her. It was an operation.
Not that long.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, passes unanimously. Thank you all for being here. We have a few other agenda items, but if these boards want to adjourn, I want to give you time to do that. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Seven twenty-two. Thank you for coming. Thank you guys for coming, appreciate it. I do not want to get up an hour early.
Start timers. I think it was certain time that the buses get up.
Yes. No, I feel like. I feel like it's probably 20 minutes.
It's nice to hear that.
I'm more efficient. All right. While you're talking, we got to move on.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Steve, appreciate it.
All right, MASC dues for fiscal year 26.
Anybody want to hear about this?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's me. I got to get back to business.
I know, I told you that.
So, um, you going to pay your dues?
Yeah.
Okay.
I volunteer.
Just for the record, we, MASC is the organization that school committees are part of, and.
Massachusetts Association.
Provide PD to folks like us.
Do we have a price?
And support. And support.
Okay, hold on, let me look.
Six thousand two hundred and seventy-six.
Thank you. Okay, so, yes, so according to MASC policy, dues are to be, to be paid no later than 90 days of the fiscal year. So, um, once again, we do continue with MASC, so we need your blessing to pay the dues of $6,276.
I make a motion to pay the MASC, MASC dues.
Okay, one second, second. Any discussion? Um, I guess I'll just say that I think we've gotten a lot of value out of our enrollment.
Membership.
Membership, thank you. That's the right word.
I think it's kind of invaluable, some of the things that they compel us.
Oh, yeah.
And I think too, not that you guys know yet, but we met in personnel and policy, and it's such an easy resource on updating policies now and how they did it as a guide for schools. So that's another thing, too.
Yeah. Yep, so, just want to say.
I would say that the MASC, I think the MASC also does a, a great job in as, being someone who served as a delegate before, in advocating for legislation for improvement of our schools.
Yeah, sounds great.
Thank you.
All right, so we had a motion in a second. All right, and any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. So it passes unanimously? All right, so now our MASC delegates. So, Nika, can you tell us what that was and what it means to be a delegate? Nika's been our delegate the last week.
So like I was saying before, it, we get together and we go through resolutions. Basically, you know, resolutions and a legislative agenda as a group. And we vote on what we're going to move forward and what resolutions we're going to pass. And I think it's been beneficial, for example, one of the things is the increasing the age of school attendance to, from 16 to 18 for students, advocating for the funding for rural school transportation and things like that. So I think that, um, the, the different school district representatives getting together to set a, a, a understanding through resolutions and legislative agenda is highly beneficial. And, and there, being a, being a delegate, you know, we see perspective because there are people, there are others whose districts don't look like ours or not, you know, have different characteristics, and so you get other perspectives. And so I think it's, it's beneficial to listen, and I think it's also beneficial to, um, to have a group like MASC that can advocate at that level on behalf of the school committees in the state.
Thanks. So with that going to the annual conference this year, I believe we're all going, is that true? We need a delegate for this year. Is there somebody who is interested in being a delegate, perhaps again?
I mean, I could be a delegate again, that's not a problem.
I motion to nominate Nika to be a delegate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nika, congratulations. All right. With that, Healthy and Safer Schools. You should have a microphone.
Everybody else got the microphone and walked over to it.
Closing doors, walking to microphone.
You should have a list in front of you with names.
It is the school committee's responsibility to reappoint, first of all, to, to say that you want to have the Healthy and Safer Schools Advisory Board, whatever we call it, every year, and then to appoint the members every year. It has to be done annually. I didn't remember if Amy's doing it again, or if we even decided that yet, so I didn't put a school committee member on. But we have traditionally had a school committee member serve, just one on that board with us. But it is the, within the policy for the school committee to say that they need it if you do, and then to approve the initial list, which is the same as last year, plus one new parent guardian who expressed interest. And then we can actively recruit throughout the course of the year.
So, uh, in an effort to meet our goal of trying to explain things better to the public, could you just give us a brief description of what the Charge of the Healthy and Safer Schools Committee is?
Yes, the Healthy and Safer Schools, uh, I think it's, what is, does it say what it is? It's not a subcommittee.
Advisory.
Advisory, thank you. Advisory Committee, they do two things. The, first and foremost, they review and make recommendations to the wellness policy. That needs to be done at least triannually. We do it every year. The federal government regulations around food service and things change potentially every year, so we just do it every year to, because it includes that. The second thing it does is it oversees the bullying prevention and intervention plan, which is also connected to that policy. Again, we are supposed to be doing that every other year. We just do it every year. So at bare minimum, we would need this committee every other year. But then every year, the food service director would be coming directly to you, saying, here's the changes I need. The other thing that we tend to do is also recommend other policy, additional policy, things like that, to the policy subcommittee. If, just as, we wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't come directly to the school committee with any recommendations for changes, but we do then go through the policy subcommittee. And then at every meeting, we hear from the food service, nursing, school safety. And then at every meeting, we hear from the food service, nursing, school safety, and the drug-free communities, and sometimes one more. But that, that's where those groups get at least twice a, once every other month, an opportunity to share with us, with the public, and then back with the committee, things that they're doing. So it act as their liaison to you and community.
Thank you very much for sharing that.
Your, my pleasure.
So with this subcommittee, Amy, are you still interested in doing this?
I am, yep, so I am unless somebody else wanted to do it.
Should I make a motion?
To add Amy?
Do we have to approve the committee first? That we want it?
Yes. So I make a motion that we continue with the Healthy and Safer Schools Committee.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, Jake?
Oh, can I make a motion that Amy be a representative on the Healthy and Safer Schools Volunteer Committee?
Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
I moved to approve the list of humans. With the addition of myself.
Wait, 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 can she motion that if she's on it? Okay, never mind, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm going to take charge of this.
There's no financial stakes.
I moved to approve the list of humans, including myself, to the Healthy and Safer Schools Advisory Committee as presented on this piece of paper.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, passes all the volunteers.
Oh, sorry.
All right.
In his document.
Fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, budget discussion.
Well, our discussion was from yesterday, we were all there. We kind of knew what happened. Nika.
Oh, sorry.
We talked about the insurance and how it was affecting FY twenty-six. We came up with proposal number five. We'll fill you in on that. And the finance committee gave fifty thousand dollars. We gave some money as well, some extra money. Everybody worked together on the three tri-boards to come up with the best solution. We did that and we all were very happy at the end, right? Yes, that's right. Mark, do you have anything else for FY twenty-six?
Nope, right now we're starting off in pretty good shape in terms of the hiring, so, so far, so good for September nine.
And twenty-seven, we just put that on because we didn't know what was happening.
All right, curriculum and instruction. Did you all meet on the third?
No.
Okay. Personnel and policy?
We did meet today, we're making progress on policy reviews to present the next meeting.
Property and transportation isn't for, what's that say? Yeah, it didn't happen yet. Finance and budget didn't happen yet. Healthy and safer schools, we did. Collaborative, is there anything to report on?
There's been some changes in leadership and we will be reorganizing. So we have a September meeting and I think that is going to be, we're going to get a lot of information about, I guess, how it's going to be reorganized.
Okay. From the media, is there any questions? All right, hearing none, with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, so we are out at seven thirty-four PM, thank you.
Can we commit to fixing the blinking light that's been blinking for five years?
Oh, it's been blinking as long as I've.
I know, so can we commit?